Thank you for coming in.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
All right, we have some family members here to support you?
Yes, indeed. There is my husband and also my daughter. She's formerly, used to be a student in Anna Yates, since kindergarten to third grade.
Okay, all right, well, we're gonna get started. Let me explain the ground rules to you. I'm John Affeldt, Board President. These are our other sitting Board members. You'll have thirty minutes for the entire interview. You might not need all of that time. You're not required to take it. There are eight questions which you've been provided. We're recommending you use about three minutes to respond to each question, but it's up to you. Either way, we're gonna end at thirty minutes. If you have time left over at the end, you'll have time for a final statement or to return to an earlier question if you wanna revisit that. That's up to you. We're bringing in candidates individually and the other candidates are listening to your responses and vice versa. And finally, candidates will be asked to leave following the interview and we will contact you by phone to let you know about the status of your candidacy. Any questions about any of that?
So far, so I think it's pretty clear.
All right.
If there is any just step that you want me to just go move forward, sometimes you just try to answer a question and then just continue. So just let me know if there is any timing.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you know as you're going through if you sort of where you're at timewise, particularly if you're running short. All right, well, I ask the first question. We're gonna rotate through on the questioning. First, can you briefly describe your commitment to public education and our local school district?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, for the ones that haven't seen, so my name is Gaudí Sanchez. I am currently resident of the Emeryville. We live really close. We live and breathe and commute within the city. Basically, it's first time as a parent in the community and also in the Anna Yates School Elementary. I believe that we experience the needs and also enjoy what the district and also the Anna Yates offers to their students and also the community. I believe as a parent, I have, so far from kindergarten, so far for the four years, the knowledge of the things that we can improve for either all of our students and also the lives of our community, not only for the ones who just attending Anna Yates, but for also the residents and kids that they're living in the city and they are currently attending another district in the surroundings. I believe that our commitment as a community, as residents, is to bring those kids who are currently attending other districts and to bring in and to include them as a community and to bring them back to make this a school district desirable and as we deserve, to bring them back and then to improve it and most of all, to just enrich all from the benefits that a school district can bring to the community as a new project that we have so far. So to me, it is the most important part, inclusion, inclusion for all the families, for the parents, and also to bring that to life as a community. So not only just for education, but only for any other future projects that the city has as a role.
Okay, thank you.
Question number two. Please share any background information that you feel prepares you for a position as a school board member, i.e. education, work experience, etc.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Don. So answering that question on the background, I will start with the most important one that I believe everybody's questioning about. I am, well, I was a mom, a parent in the community, also for Anna Yates. We work closely within the activities of the community, not only within the school, but also outside of the school. Activities within the programs of the city of Emeryville, after-school program for soccer, new programs, after-school programs, the new science project that most of the teachers that were including and bringing from other museums and places to the classes, to the classrooms. I believe that information and experience will bring to the table or will bring to the community the things that also that we need to just add to the programs within the classes and also the inclusion between the principal and also within the community. How can the companies around the Emeryville can help and help us, you know, each other? So what other companies that we have in Emeryville that they can be helping us with with the programs that we have or the projects as a parents or also as the board just can work it out? Currently, I have experience working with technology companies and also my background is I'm a marketer and, well, managing multimillion dollar companies, also multimillion dollar projects. It is important for us as a community to bring someone who can understand and to have the best utilize those resources to bring it back and also to produce and to see growth within our community. So that will be for that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. To ensuring the board functions well and share any prior experience on working on boards or teams.
Okay, so working as a team, I believe. As a professional experience, basically, I believe that inclusion, communication, and also finding a common ground and find a common goal. It is the best tool that you can bring to any or team or board, city, or country, the state. It will, bringing that directly to communication and having a common goal, no matter cultural background, also economical. But most importantly, I believe that if you can work as a team with those ideals and with those goals completely identified and with the energy that you have or every single member of that team can bring to the idea or to the project, it can be very well executed and concluded and bring good results within a short period of time, as we can see in Emeryville. So I believe that so far, the community have done a marvelous job working not only with the Board of Education, while bringing Dr. Rubio to our district. But I believe the communication within the board, currently board, it is bringing a lot of new ideas and I think as an excellent, you know, indicator that things can get done and there is the drive to do it. So I believe that that is, communication is key for that.
How does the board's role differ from that of the superintendent?
Well, overseeing, as a person experienced overseeing all the projects and as I mentioned before, the communication between those goals within, aligned within also the superintendent and also the teachers and the staff in the community and the education and the board of education. I believe that it is not to tell what to do or to tell the superintendent what to do. I believe it's oversee, collaborate, and to bring new ideas. To bring new ideas and to align them, both of them, so they can just have a very good, well, results, basically, and be a very well-invented experience results.
Okay. The next question is, with the district's four goals in mind, and you should have our goals up there with you, what do you see as the strengths of the Emory Unified School District?
Okay, so as a strength, I believe that our common goal so far, we are, we wanna work as a community. We believe in the importance, not only as a community or just as, just the families who lives here. A community involves all the companies who takes part of Emeryville and be part of this ecosystem, that it can help to each other. So I believe we are aware of that. So far, I've seen it. I've seen it firsthand. I spoke with some members and in some occasions, I, we spoke with superintendent in one of our meetings, that group of meetings with parents and Anna Yates. And there is an interest. We believe that this community, this city of Emeryville can grow with having those common goals and we try to execute them. So I believe that, we know, we have the idea and I believe that the main strength is because we are focused on technology and we really want to work as that. We see, we see the idea, we're trying to execute it. So I believe that that's one of the most strengths, the communication between the board and also the alignment between the superintendent and also between the communities around.
Okay. Let me just say, you're doing fine. We're through five of eight questions. You've got twenty minutes left.
Okay.
You're fine timewise.
Thank you.
With the district's four goals in mind, what do you see as the area's most needing improvement in the Emory Unified School District?
Okay. If you allow me to speak as a parent also again, and I know that I've been using, hopefully it's not get overrated, but it's my, I think that's as in my background and also as a firsthand experience on the school district and also in the school of Anna Yates. We need our, we need educators, highly skilled educators. I believe it's not only just as part of the, this type of ecosystem within the schools, but it will bring so much enrichment to our kids and our classes, bringing its skill sets with those teachers and also staff who bring that enrichment. I believe that if we bring that to the schools, to the classes, to bring that, we can offer that not only to the kids, but also to the communities, whoever is interested in getting involved as in the future, that's, we have this project of the community or the huge magnificent project that we have across, almost across the street about a community and also a school, working as within or as one. Bringing educators with a highly skilled level and high skill set and high technology focuses and bringing with that ideas and being innovators, it will bring a lot of enrichment to all these kids. And I believe that with that in mind, so far, we don't have it and I can tell you firsthand. My daughter was there for Anna Yates since kindergarten to third grade and there is teachers, of course, and there is wonderful teachers there. But the resources are limited. There's so, I can tell you, three to five, some teachers, they really want to just continue working, strive for what they can do for whatever so limited resources they have. But there is a need and there is the hunger for those teachers whether they want, they cannot continue their education or they can, any other reasons, they cannot, you know, just update their knowledge or they just cannot bring or take classes. Well, they feel like they need the support from the Unified School District. Maybe those teachers could, you know, just find a way to just give them the tools, give them the power, empower them just to bring that knowledge, to take a course, to take a class and to just to, and also, not only that, but just to increase the level of teachers or the level of extracurricular classes or after-school programs that we have. So that it will bring a lot of to our, to our community and to our school. So I really believe that we need to improve that. Teachers and also, not only in that, because sometimes as parents, we, some of us, we believe that everything should be like within the school, but also it's in the other side. So to bring more inclusion, not just to the teachers, that's one part. The other one is to bring more interest within the community to the parents. Parent inclusion is very low in Emeryville and I could say not most of the parents, they don't even know this board exists. So to get to know that we're here, that the superintendent Rubio is here, that Ms. Lang is doing a lot of efforts and also that there is an interest between all the companies around for what we're doing. So I believe if you bring that, if we improve that, I mean, this community will be so desirable. I mean, so many other kids, the kids that are not attending and going to another school district, but also to the kids that they are already here. So I see that's one of the points that as, first as a parent, I believe that we need improvement. Just get the word out there, prepare our teachers and also parent inclusion. Include their parents, invite them and not giving up. Just knock their doors, make more events, bring them, call them, email them. Try to open, if they cannot just attend here one night, we have technology. We can do a Google Hangout. We can just bring it to them. So that's, that will be part of the improvement. Communication between both of us and also try to bring a little bit more educations to the teacher and give them more resources, because at the end of the day, that'll go directly to our kids.
Of the district's four goals, are there any you do not support? Do you have any additional goals you think should be considered?
Well, it's, I don't think that any of the goals that the board has or the district have has a bring to table or to have in mind. I'm not against to any. I think that all the goals are, they're marvelous ideas. They're wonderful. They, we're talking about technology. We're talking about inclusion. We're talking about bringing a new set of ideas in you. Try to give formation to our kids as, raise them or educate them as a first world citizen. So I don't oppose to any of those. Also, I believe that there's some, there will be some ideas in the future that the board then might bring or situations that the, in the, during the course of the year or the calendar will be discussed. I cannot say that I oppose to them. But also, I believe that good communication, finding common ground and if those, all of those goals align to what could bring the best to our community, I believe that I'm completely happy. But also, I will bring some ideas and I believe that we all have the right as a board to discuss those ideas and to be, to decide what were the best for, to make them happen. Not only just to sit here as worrying and just as, you know, just unwritten and leaving in the book, but just to make it happen and to, you know, capitalize it. We need, we need those goals to, to make them happen, to make them real. So I believe that, no, I don't oppose any of them. But also, I believe that, yes, we can bring more ideas and more goals, not only just to stop on four, but within the course of the year, if most of them will develop. And I think as a board and the communication that I was talking earlier, I believe that we can bring more goals, communicate them and share it to each other and just bring it to the community.
Are you aware that the district is striving to be a full-service community school district? And what does that mean to you?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we have been receiving for quite a while emails from the city of Emeryville about the new development, even before it was third down, the old high school. Even when the high school was there, even the rumors when we were in second grade, that we were gonna lose our school and all other things, so. Within the past of the years, the course of the years, we get more information out. The Emeryville District gave more information to the residents. Yes, I'm aware. Yes, I am aware of all the things that the city wants to bring and how they want or they to include all the residents in the Emeryville. Not only the school and, or parents or students that they live with in the area or outside, but also, I mean, just to try to attract, be attracted to a new residence, right, within the, as we all know and we're all aware that we're, we're a hot city right now. We're super hip right now. We're trying to attract everybody from San Francisco here. We're developing like crazy. Partners are coming and the new families in the community is growing. I'm not opposed to that. I believe that within the standards and the safety standards, I believe that the city has and have, I believe, or I think, they have projected and they, or they have overseen, they, I'm sure they, there is, there is, there is two sides of this story. Either, there's most people because they're misinformed, they don't know what is a project about. What is this gonna bring me to my kids? What as a resident of Emeryville is gonna give to me or just provide me? Computers, library, what else? How access? In my, how do I know if my kids are safe within the school or this program, this massive project? So I am aware. Do I like the idea? Yes, very much. It will bring a lot of things to the city. A lot of new access to technology to the kids. Do we like it? Do we need it? Probably some of them don't. As we all know, technology, it can be dated from one day to another. But I believe that is, there is a need for the city to, to have a center as the one that we have right now. We don't have a pool, for example. We don't have a basketball court, for example, team, sports, a place where all the community can just feel as a home on one roof. So the idea is wonderful. It is very ambitious. I am aware in some areas in some states have worked or in other areas haven't, have not worked. But who knows? We will see and I think within the community and also as a board, the job of the board or the job of the school district and also of the city, it is to communicate a simple and let the residents be aware of what exactly it is. So far, the maturity, I can tell you as firsthand, I mean, I'm a resident since five years and even though some of them, they are connected to the city through email or through the newsletter, but they don't know what exactly is going on. So we need that direct communication to the citizens. We really need that, to share that, to that idea to be accepted, to make into a simple language. It could be understood and also to bring what exactly are the benefits of that massive project. Because so far, has been just, you know, it's, it's been perceived as just like a waste of money, some of them. Some of the safety issues, some of them just opposed because they're not agreeing. They don't know why, but they just, they just, they don't know what's going on. So I think one of the challenges would be awesome, the schools. Anna Yates being inclusive, hey, parents, would you like to join me? To see, we have this, we have a massive project. You are gonna be benefited on this and this and that, simple language. But just as a, as an idea and as a personal, well, as a resident, parent and also as a person who has vision and love technology, I believe that this project, it's, it will bring a lot of good things to the city. So in it and using it well also. And not just letting it just bring that huge massive structure and leave it there just to, no good. So we need to take advantage of the resources and will utilize them. So that will be, so, yeah. That idea, I think it's, it's a wonderful idea and hopefully it just turns out that well. So we're expecting that, as a resident, we really expect that.
Okay, thank you. You've answered all the questions and you have five minutes, about five and a half minutes left. If you'd like to give a closing statement or return to any prior answer.
Will be, I'll choose a closing statement.
Okay.
I've been living here, we've been living here for about five years, five years so far. Even though with the ups and downs of the city, even though we've seen firsthand huge and rapidly growth of the city and also in the schools, we've seen a lot of changes and improvement. And we haven't, even though our daughter right now so far is not attending Anna Yates for any other reasons, we haven't given up. I think as a parents and I think as Emeryvillians, we fall in love with the city and we fall in love with, with the energy that the people who lives here has. We believe that with all the resources that this city has, we believe that things can be possible and things can get done. It is a lot of energy. Yes, they need to be put. It is a lot of things and time that need to be put on the table, but I think we believe that things can get done, especially in education. We believe in education, no matter economical background, no matter cultural, no matter language. We are, we speak Spanish. We, sometimes there's a, there is a community who's growing also, firstborn and also foreign born, who are moving to the technology companies and bringing here. They're trying to find that community and that involvement. So I believe that Emeryville so far, has been giving us a lot of that. And yes, it is a small, it is a small community, but I don't see why not the city or I don't see why not the Unified School District can bring that to the table and can help us to nurture that. There is a desire for, to knowing all the families. We've been here for a while. We've been, we do a sports here. We create, also support the local sports team because we got very excited about the new, the new ideas. So I think that the Rex Center, they started a youth soccer team. So we are starting to support that. So I believe that all that can be done and can flourish. It is a wonderful city. We love it. We love the teachers. We know that most of them are our friends, that we believe that the new, the new principal, the new leadership in the school, it is really brilliant. We've seen results, we saw results in a short period of time that we saw her. She supports our community impressively. She involves and also add cultural involvement. She gives representatives, every single culture. She brought that family kind of oriented kind of type of community within the school. And if we see that around the city and around all the projects that the new schools can offer and also to the community. the projects that the new schools can offer and also to the community, this can be a stop, unstoppable. It will be wonderful to see it. Like, it, I don't see five years. If we saw that in five years that we've been living here in Emeryville, I don't see why no, we can see most wonderful things come and happening this, hopefully next five years more. So, uh, so, so far, I believe that we haven't given up and that's why we are here. Uh, we're a family, we're a small family, but we believe that, uh, we, we, we see more things and more projects in this city and, and, and we see the, the people is prepared here and that they have the energies and they, they want to be here. They wanted to be part of it. So, it's just a matter of just, uh, work as a team. Work as a team, communicate it and just bring the energy. So, that will be our most wonderful, uh, vision for the city and for the reason for, to be here and just until that's time after dinner. So, that will be, uh, our, our common goal, I could say. And thank you. Thank you for, for opening, uh, the doors and for allowing us this opportunity to be here, to be heard and, uh, for either this interview can go as any way or hopefully it is, uh, to the, to the person who, who really is going to bring the best to the, to the chair into this position and, um, eh, to, to make things better, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for, um, uh, putting your application in and taking the time to come and talk with us.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for listening just thirty minutes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And for bringing your family.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's my, my, my moral support right there, right? My motto. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.